So all set, Mr. Chairman?
Is it one o'clock, folks?
It is.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners into session. On Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty. That order was effective immediately. Until it is rescinded, other state of emergencies terminated. Further, on February twelfth, twenty twenty-two, by after the legislature, that order was extended until July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Good afternoon and welcome. We are live and on Zoom today. We have a hybrid meeting. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the flag. I salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. While we remain standing today, I want to mention a member of our Norfolk County community, Mark L. Jenkins of Abington, Mass, a Quincy native and a Cohasset policeman, collapsed and died in Quincy on three eleven twenty-two. I think it was Friday evening at a social occasion. Mark was known personally to members of this board and known by his great attributes. He was a veteran, a Coast Guard veteran, a father, and a great public servant. We have some public servants here with us today, some law enforcement people, some public safety people. Think of when they're in Han's Way and when they're at work. What we sometimes don't think of are people that have these other occurrences that happen to all of us. And Mark lost his life in one cardiac event. I believe it was a cardiac event. I certainly know it. And it's been a blow. And as we speak today, his wake is being held today and funeral tomorrow. So take a minute to remember Mark, a longtime Cohasset police officer. Okay, thank you. Call the roll and we're going to write to our guests here today. I'm going to, I'm calling this meeting to order. I'm going to call the roll Commissioner Stady.
President.
Commissioner Collins.
President.
And Commissioner Shea is here. We have a roll call. Today, at the request of Commissioner Stady, we're going to hear from some people of the Norfolk County Tech Rescue Group, which is made up of firefighters and various officers from Norfolk County. So I'm going to turn it over to Dick Stady, who requested that this be on our agenda. That's going to be our first item. Then our opera presentation of the town in Needham will be the second item. So good afternoon, gentlemen. And I'm going to call on Commissioner Stady.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A pleasure to introduce our fire personnel this afternoon to join us for a brief presentation. This came about out of a discussion, one of many I have on occasion with Chief Duty from Canton, who's doing a great job there. And his idea was to first present to us what the tech team does. And then obviously, perhaps after we see a little bit about it, how can we assist them and how can we assist them? And they can assist us as well. So I really would like to just welcome everyone again. Thank you for being here. We all appreciate all the service you do here, respective towns. And obviously, one of the things that we have emphasized as a result of study and conversation with other public officials is how can we as commissioners promote regionalization? And I can't think of a better way to promote regionalization than perhaps even in terms of this rescue team. So again, we welcome you. With that, I would like to turn it over to Chief Duty to perhaps begin the presentation and make a few comments. So Chief Duty?
Would you like me?
Come right up here.
Wherever you want to sit.
Sit with us.
Yep.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shea, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Here's Mr. Stady. Thank you very much for inviting us in to talk about the Norfolk County Tech Rescue Team. On behalf of the Fire Chiefs and team members that are here today, we want to thank you for the opportunity to let you know what we do and why it's important to our towns in Norfolk County. The Tech Rescue Team serves all communities in Norfolk County, all twenty-eight. We have team members from just about all towns in Norfolk County who comprise the team and are especially trained to respond to certain incidents that Captain Morgan and Lieutenant McCabe will talk to you about during their presentation. So I just wanted to thank you for having us here. We're going to let the experts in technical rescue tell you about what they do. And then when they're complete, the chiefs will finish up and ask you or tell you or ask you for some support from the team.
All right. Sounds great. Thank you, Chief.
So I'd like to introduce Captain Andy Morgan and Lieutenant Mark McCabe. Captain Morgan's from Canton. Lieutenant McCabe is from Braintree. And they're going to take you through their presentation.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen.
Would you like us to stand?
Do you want to stand, sit, whatever comes?
It's easy for you.
Very good. Sure.
Come down here a little because she's being broken.
Yeah, we want to make sure you're seen.
Yeah.
Stand behind you. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I agree.
It's fine.
Everything's zooms this way. Or on Zoom too.
There you go. Take it away.
How would we advance the slides?
I can do that for you.
Just tell me.
Okay.
I can.
Okay.
There you go.
Bill can.
All right, so first off, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. So we represent the regional technical rescue team in Norfolk County. We get started about two thousand nine, two thousand ten, started with the equipment. And it was a long time and a long road developing and getting to the point that we're at now. Initially, we started responding to incidences that are specialized that maybe a local agency couldn't handle, such as like a rope rescue, somebody trapped, somebody stuck a pin. So it's basically a specialized unit that'll come in and help with specialized training, specialized equipment that maybe not every fire department or police department has, and able to bring that forward and use that to aid the person in these, you know, very low frequency but high risk events, if you will. And of course, they're happening in Norfolk County. We've had quite a few incidences. They're happening all throughout the state and happen all throughout the country. You could advance a few. There you go. So it's been up and running under the authority of jurisdiction, which is the Norfolk County Fire Chief, since the fall of two thousand eleven. Some of the things we do is rope, confined space, and trench. That's what we started with. That was at the time the most popular callouts, if you will. And due to needs within the region, we've expanded, if you will, almost like mission creep. So now we do structural collapse, which is what you see in the picture in the lower right. They're actually supporting a wall that was damaged, training for it. Swift and surface water and flood. I would say that right now that's probably our most frequent callout from areas of the region, areas outside of the region, even southeast of Mass. We've had a few responses with that. We've had a few alerts, put an alert for that. We also do rapid needs assessment. So if an area is damaged, we can go through, similar to what happened in Danvers. That's probably the most noteworthy example. When the explosion happened up there around Thanksgiving, they can go through and assess the buildings, assess if there's any potential victims or patients in there and report back to a command center so they can allocate the right resources. Tower rescue, which incorporates tower and also cellphone towers and wind turbines. And we also recently introduced medical specialists because what we found through experience and callouts is that some of these people that might be trapped or in the situation for a longer duration than a normal event, who knows what a normal event is, they're going to need some type of special medical attention on that. So people are trained to treat these people to a longer duration, especially with like question drone and stuff like that. You could advance the slide. Team enrollment is about fifty plus or minus. Currently, there's forty-seven members. We are losing members due to attrition, retirement. So we just put on a few more. We have one director, two deputy directors, a communications director, which is always key, one medical control doctor, and three liaison chiefs that are with us here today. And all that, so we're basically self-sufficient when we go onto a scene. We're not relying on a host community for such things as communications, medical, or whatever the case may be. We have a steering committee. And the steering committee basically decides, makes all the decisions. So it's not just basically one person. The entire team is rescue specialists. Everyone's cross-trained. So we don't have some people that just do rope. Some people just do trench. They're all cross-trained in the same thing. You could advance the slide. So that's basically the structure of the chiefs of the authority of jurisdiction. We have the Norfolk County steering chiefs, which are with us today, the director, the deputy directors, the steering committee, and then we have equipment, training coordinators, and rescue specialists. And this has been formed and, over the ten years. You can go ahead and advance the slide. Yeah, if there's an activation, what happens is incident commander at this scene can call their dispatch. The dispatch will call Norfolk County Control. And they have a system in place to notify the technical rescue team. And they'll send the appropriate response. You go ahead and advance the slide. And they'll call for the dispatch. Great, you can advance the slide, Bill. They'll page the directors of steering committee, give them the details. Usually, we get who called. We'll call them back and see what you have and what you need. You go ahead and advance the slide. For activation, we'll advise what resources to send so it's not an entire team each and every time. It could be an assessment. They'll page everyone in the town to respond to and the type of response. And that's one of our trailers right there. You ready to advance, Bill? So that's some of our equipment. We started off small with equipment. And we've gained a lot over the years through some with Homeland Security, a lot with the Norfolk County Chiefs. But we have a lot of equipment, if you will, to be able to respond to an incident and handle any type of specialized rescue that may be. You can go ahead and advance, Bill. Yeah, so just more equipment. Upon activation, Norfolk County will update the area and the number of people being satisfied. So if we only need ten, we'll need twenty. Members respond through a paging system called "I'm Responding." And our ETA usually is about fifteen minutes for somebody on scene, which is pretty good. There's a lot of hesitation beginning with local resources because they're afraid it would take too long. Sometimes we've had people there within ten minutes. And usually, we have equipment there within nineteen minutes. Billy, that one right there is that happened in Rentham with a couple of hikers that got stuck that we responded to. Billy, you ready to advance the slide? Tap it through. So kind of like we already talked about Norfolk County Chiefs, however, the steering committee will respond as liaison officer. So Norfolk County Chiefs, no check rescue, will respond to work with that local incident commander or fire chief to say, this is what's going on, what you need from us. So basically, they're talking the same lingo. And it's actually worked out very, very well. It started in Norfolk County and has expanded across southeast Mass. And now that liaison chief model is being used across the other state. They will work on the ICA, advise them on what technical rescue is working on, kind of like a, almost like a hazard material response. And Norfolk County is, the tech team is self-sufficient for twenty-four to thirty-six hours with clothing, food, and shelter and stuff like that. You go ahead and advance, Bill. Your team can be activated via a fire mobilization plan through Norfolk County. They can also be activated if MEMA requests us to go somewhere for a response within the county, or within the region. And we could also be activated through emergency management assistance compact request, which is a federal adjunct of like MEMA. So that's how we ended up going to Hurricane Florence in North Carolina to help with flood and swift water response. You ready to advance? In every situation, the host department members will be integrated into the tech teams and squads. So it's not as if we arrive, put them to the side, and go to work. We'll integrate them with working with us. In this picture, you can see Rentham. You see tech team members working with the fire department to assist in getting those two members down, two individuals down. You go ahead and advance. There you go. What would be asked for the host department to size this scary incident? What is the stage and what we can do for you? That's the biggest one. What can we do for you? Sometimes, fire departments will call and say, I'm just calling for advisement. Can you guys handle this? Should you guys come here? We'll say, yes, no, that's not, and it will help or where the case may be. But nine times out of ten, we'll call, they'll call us. I'll call the host fire department. And they'll say, is there something you could help us with? Absolutely. What is the cost of liability is the next question we always got, especially in the beginning. There is no cost. It's covered under mutual aid. If somebody gets hurt, it's covered under 111F. So it's considered mutual aid. We fall under ESF four through the fire mobilization through the state. You can advance, Bill. We all have IDs. So we'll go in there with credential. We have accountability officer. And we don't take any of those resources away from the host fire department. We do it all ourselves and then we'll report to the host IC. So we're not taking anything away from them. You go ahead and advance. So we have operational rope, technician-level rope, which is advanced skills, that'd be like high lines, confined space, trench, surface swift, and floodwater rescue. These are all things where we could be dealing with swift water, surface water, flood. Again, these are all specialized rescues. And again, they're all low frequency, but they're very high-risk events for a rescue agency, a host fire department agency. Go ahead, Bill. Field force extrication. We've been called out a few times for standby and one time for an actual assistance to the police. And that's where a protester has locked himself down, kind of like what happened in Route ninety-three in Milton. A most recent one was in December of two thousand nineteen when there was a protest with a compressor station. We were called out, working under and with the local police. We worked with them to extricate the people off the equipment. So we worked well with our police partners, if you will, with that. Go ahead, Bill. Structural collapse, tower rescue, technical search. These are some of the things that almost we had like mission creep and got pulled into. We found that there's an infrastructural collapse in Norfolk County. And that could be anything from a car into a small store or a house or a building collapse in a large city. It doesn't always have to be on a grander scale. We've been trained for that, which is an eighty-hour training program. Tower rescue or cell turbine turbine. We also have the capabilities for technical search. If somebody is trapped, missing, we could use a camera to go into like a debris pile and try and look for them. We have a crucial listening devices, rapid needs assessment, wide area search for a missing person, which could be in the woods. We'll work with our law enforcement partners on that. You can go ahead and advance. Large animal rescue. Again, we're getting pulled in totally different directions. So we've had a couple of large animal rescues where we had to get trained and then get equipment. And, you know, we basically got some equipment to do that or we relied on our other regional partners. Could you advance? So that's an example of operational rope. That is training, but you can see one person is basically rescuing the other person. That's the operational level, which is the basic level, if you will. You go ahead and advance. Technician level, that's actually a high line where they're going down to retrieve somebody or to get somebody from a higher elevation to a lower elevation over somewhere where they can't walk across. So Quincy quarries would be a great example, something like that. They'll use that so they can get that person down, especially when it's with water and the water's there now, over where they cannot just lower the person down or haul them up. They'll get them and they'll basically get them across. It takes technician-level skills or rope training, if you will. You can go ahead and advance. And that's some training in Quincy quarries, as I mentioned on that. We train every month except for July and August. And we'll do things like put a mannequin over the side and then they have to go treat them medically now and also rescue them. You go ahead and advance. In Quincy, we've done training and again, using the high lines, all the skills. It is a perishable skill and that's why we train every month. You can go ahead and advance. Confined space. We've called out a couple of times for confined space incidences. One was in midfield.
This is on USS.
Yeah. That was midfield, right?
Yeah, that's coming up.
It was a dog in the well. So that's one example. But this is a confined space. We have to be able to go into a confined space, constricted space, and rescue somebody who may be incapacitated. Again, accounts for about three hundred deaths across the US every year according to OSHA. So it's one of those things that's still out there. You can go ahead and advance. Confined space, once again, took a confined space and may go down. We've both been trained to go horizontally into like a vault and be able to rescue somebody. This person, mannequin, they got for training, actually had a piece of steel on them. So they get trained and they do a lot of the skills altogether. You go ahead and advance. Working in USS Salem in Quincy, which is in a tight space. You go ahead and advance. And again, they have to treat the person and they have to be able to get the person out. So that's just a team working with our law enforcement partners sometimes. Sometimes we work with the military. They look for us for interoperability and also a little bit of training. You can go ahead and advance. Trench rescue. Trench rescue is when somebody, unfortunately, and we've seen this in the events recently, is gets trapped into a trench. And we've trained extensively and we have the equipment to be able to mitigate that hazard and be able to go in and get the person out safely. So we drill in this on a regular basis. You can go ahead and advance. And again, the biggest thing lately for us, and not lately, but is working to treat that person appropriately. So here, it's mannequin, but they have all the advanced lifesaving measures that medical specialists would do in dealing with crush syndrome is one example. You go ahead and advance. Structural collapse in dealing with people if somebody's trapped. And again, it doesn't have to be a World Trade Center. It doesn't have to be Katrina. It doesn't have to be Oklahoma City. It could be something small. But they've, all the people that we have have been trained, or most of them have been trained to be able to reach the person, communicate with the person, and then be able to get them out through something that's what we call heavy concrete or heavy timber, if you will, to be able to get the person out. You go ahead and advance. They learn to shore up walls and they learn to shore up buildings and ceilings. So if the building is compromised, but they still have to get in, say like, for example, Walmart, a very generic example, they can hold up the ceiling so they can go in and get the person, if you will. Could advance. You have to learn how to lift concrete off of people because that's around the country that has happened. So they have to learn how to move heavy objects. Could advance. And we always have ongoing drills. And one of those was showing in a school that was donated to the town, the town to know for us for drilling. Go ahead and advance. Team drills are monthly, share with other counties for interoperability. So we also work with Plymouth County, Bristol County because they border with us. We'll work with Boston. We'll work with Newton Fire because they border us as a county. And we'll work together. You know, what toys you have, what toys we have. We don't have enough, let's work together. They learn from us, we learn from them. So we're always working with our partners in the counties around us. Go ahead, you can advance. And drills hit every discipline, which gets to be a lot, like I said, in the past ten years, a lot of disciplines that we're getting into. So here's an example of structural collapse training, both on a wall and a ceiling. You can go ahead and advance. Bring equipment drills with exposure to new tools by vendors. So sometimes we'll have a drill, but we'll also, you know, things advance, techniques advance, technology and advances. So we'll bring in vendors. And there's, just for reference, there's a minimum of drills that must be made by members to stay on the team. Go ahead and advance. Go ahead and advance. Yeah. So just examples, every single drill. We didn't ask him to stage for this. He just decided to smile for that. But again, that's Quincy quarries. That's a different drill than the other one. Go ahead and advance. And it's a team picture. There's a lot of people that have been up at this team. There's a lot of commitment, a lot of volunteerism just to get the team up and running. A lot of work by the administrators, the chiefs, and the directors and deputy directors on their own time to get this to work and to run. And it's getting to be a big machine, if you will. Advance. Recent confined space drills. So that's what we're dealing with. That's on the USS Salem. That's looking down, the hatchet's maybe twenty-two inches. And the victim is down at the very bottom and off to the side. That happens to be a light dose placed by the first entry team. That's what I can see. And that's what we deal with on that. So we, you know, we play as if it's real, if you will. So we do use equipment. We do beat up equipment when we're doing these drills. And sometimes it does have to be replaced. Go ahead and advance. Go ahead and advance. Again, patient packaging, dealing with the patient. That's the number one reason why we're there. So we're always dealing with that. Go ahead and advance. Recent trench drill. Again, if you see everybody with the vest on, that's the tech team. And they're integrating with the host IC, which in this case was a captain from Sharon. So basically, when we was acting, we had liaison chief who was out of the picture. He was, what can we do for you? And then we have our roles and they work with and under the local fire department. Go ahead and advance, or it's your operations center. So trench drill, just recent trench drill. Go ahead and advance. We've even got asked to go to Blue Hills to see how they evacuate people so in case any assistance with evacuating people off a chairlift. Go ahead and advance. So we spent a night going over drills there. Go ahead and advance on uniqueness to what they do and how they get people down. Because what we would, how we would approach would just ropes and, you know, ladders and tower ladders isn't going to work. So they have a special system in place. And we learned it as opposed to learning it, God forbid, should something happen. So preparation. Go ahead and advance. Several team members have been trained by the Center for Domestic Preparation down in Alabama. And several others have been trained by MEMA to deal with field force extrication. Go ahead and advance. And again, that's when somebody has chained themselves or locked themselves to a piece of equipment in protest. We don't do anything until the police basically have possession of them and then ask us for assistance in getting them out. And we've dealt with all the specialized equipment or excuse me, extrication devices that they can use to basically lock themselves or chain themselves to a device or something at an incident. lock themselves or chain themselves to a device or something at an incident. Go ahead and advance. And this is us just training on it and learning how to get those devices out. Usually called sleeping dragons, how to get the people out without hurting them. Go ahead and advance. Go ahead and advance. That was an incident that happened in Waymouth and once the police placed them under arrest, they just asked us for assistance in executing them off of those devices, which these members were trained to the hilt, I'll say, and did it very efficiently, working with the police. Go ahead and advance. More pictures of the same. Go ahead and advance. Training requirements, we have minimum training requirements for the team members. And again, they have to have that as well as attendance. Go ahead and advance. Equipment, all the equipment is stored in and on trailers. Three 20 foot trailers contain most of the equipment. One is stored in Avon, one is stored in Canton, one is stored in Wellesley. We have a surplus Western style box truck, which is older, which is stored in Plainville. Go ahead and advance. So there's a Western star straight body truck. Go ahead and advance. Building trailer was 100% done by team members. The equipment was funded via Homeland Security grants previously. Go ahead and advance. So there's the trailers and you can just see the plethora of equipment that we have on there. So we can handle everything. Every trailer set, not exactly the same, but they all have a little bit of equipment so they can get it started. So if it's a rope rescue, they can get it started. If it's a trench rescue, they can get it started. If it's a collapse, they can get it started. And they cover the county pretty well for response, the spread out, I should say. Go ahead and advance. Team responses, we'll just go through a couple of them. Twenty three old male on top of the bridge in Waymouth long time ago, and we were called to assist the police in getting the person down off the bridge. Go ahead and advance. Rent them with the two hikers that climbed up and then I guess they called a flash freeze. They kind of got stuck. They couldn't get down. So the fire department couldn't reach them with the tallest ground ladder, a 35 foot ladder. So they called in the team and we were able to get them down, probably within an hour. Just with the, with the systems in place and with the training we had. Advance. Franklin, we had a report of somebody who fell into a pit or a well. Advance. We've also participated in statewide exercises called mobile exercises. And this is put on by Homeland Security or MIMA. And what it is, just an exercise to work the technical rescue teams, hazardous materials, all working together in interoperability. You can see here we're working with the military as they were a resource to get in under the simulated incident. Go ahead and advance. Midfield, we had a confined space incident where a dog was down in the well. So we went down to get the dog. Go ahead and advance. And that was beyond the capabilities of a, the local fire department. And that's why they called us. That's where we had somebody there within eight minutes talking to the fire chief. A tech team member saying, chief, what can we do for you? And then we had the trailer there in no time. This was in Braintree, happened a few years ago where a diver unfortunately passed away in a water tank. That ended up to be an 18 hour operation. We're by the local fire department. It was given over to the tech team because it was beyond their training, beyond their equipment resources. And the tech team worked 18 hours to lower the water level and recover the diver. And that was a long response and very cold. Go ahead and advance. Statewide exercise again was an operation with their call score, which is basically structural collapse operation for readiness. So everybody had to respond like it's real world. Everybody had to live there like it's real world. And so we've had a lot of exercises, let alone our own little local drills, if you will. Go ahead and advance. Coastal Storm Riley, we were put on vet four and then we were activated. So that was Cohasset Hull, Duxbury, Situate.
That is in.
That, yeah. Yeah, that one is. But that's what we responded to. And they actually picked me from Norfolk County to go to the EOC in Noel and Manchester Tech Teams under the umbrella of a whole incident command system for Southeast. Advance. Share machinery entrainment. We see the call for present traps of machinery. Upon arrival, they as a commander, they merely call for a tech team because they realized that they didn't have the resources or even the capability of the the strong airbags they have to lift this machinery off a person. And they called at nine fifty eight. We had two members there at ten twelve. This is to show the timeline. And the first trailer was on the scene at ten fifteen. So we get there pretty quick. It's, it's members that are on duty, members that are home get paged and they respond to the scene. Advance. That's just a picture from it. Advance.
So that.
Go there.
Yeah, there's a couple of these.
Go ahead.
Well, so what I'd like to talk about as far as this machine extrication was that the fire departments on scene had their equipment, they were using it, but it wasn't working. So we provide not only different types of equipment, but different technique of performing rescues. So as Mark's been saying, what we do is we, we integrate very well with, with almost anybody, well, with anybody. We, we, we pull from, we pull, we pull from all the, all the counties and all those members and we train them up. And the best part is we can take them out into their individual departments so that they can train and help their members. But every once in a while, in these type of situations, that, you know, it's a little bit beyond most fire departments to do these type of rescues.
So in this one, we brought specialized equipment that was able to basically move the object and lift the object off the person. Advance. 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 And then as explained, has to go through, since it's compact, to North Carolina for a flood response as part of through MIMA. Advance. I would just show you some pictures with that and just wrap it up. So that was our response through flood rescue, water rescue, which seems to be the biggest thing we're going to be dealing with in the future. Advance. Advance. Checking on homeowners, residents, rescuing the dog. Advance. Even put an IV in a dog that they found. Advance. Those are Norfolk members. Had in-service training while we were there in case they get deployed via helicopter. Advance. 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 More training. We trained with FEMA now at advance. We've done a lot of interoperability with our regional partners in counties and also federal partners sometime, sometimes and law enforcement. So that brings us basically to the close of the presentation for that. So we do a lot and spend a lot for over the 10 years to get a team up to the efficiency it has right now, which is really on all cylinders and very, very good. Do you have any questions for us, commissioners?
I think we probably do, yes. Commissioners, any questions?
Now, it was a great presentation. Obviously, I learned a lot. I think we all did. I had no idea of the amount of work and that you do in terms of integrating, but a couple of quick ones, if I could, through the chair. He answered where the equipment stores, so I got that. So when an incident happens, the entire team responds and then who discerns how many are needed? At what point, you don't have all 47 people going. So who makes the call on that?
One of the director or the deputy directors from the team.
Okay.
Or a steering committee member.
And I know there's a hazmat county rescue team or as such. What's the difference between that? Was that a particular skill set that we have as well? Is that run by the fire department or the state or the county? There's a hazmat response team. Is that structured or the same idea?
It's, it's similar in structure, but it's, it comes under the auspices of the Department of Fire Services.
Okay.
And that's specific to hazardous materials incident. They don't, they don't work with these technical rescue incidents that this team does.
Okay, there's no crossover on that.
Not really. And that, that team is also funded by the state, whereas our team is not funded at all.
Not funded at all. Okay, so we addressed that a little bit. All right, last question then. So basically, an incident might happen in Sharon or Milton or Medway and the local fire department would analyze it quickly and then make a determination of what to call in, the NCTR. That's how it goes?
Yeah, the, the, the local community would make an assessment that the incident was beyond their capabilities, training or equipment. And then we would call Norfolk County Control, a regional dispatch center that would then tone out or call the technical rescue team to respond. A representative would show up on the scene, liaise with the local incident commander and then assess what kinds of equipment, how many men they, men and women they need, and then go from there.
So the salaries are covered by the local departments because they're working still as a firefighter in their community. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the, the cost of these members that respond to different communities is borne by the community that that member works in. So if they're responding, if Kent, if, if Captain Morgan is responding to Milton, the town of Canton is paying Captain Morgan. There's really no funding mechanism to pay these people.
But supplies do cost, right? And you need some help on that.
Again, the same, the towns, the towns also fund the supplies.
Maybe Mr. Chairman, we could look at opera, maybe perhaps in terms of helping out this group might be a worthy thing to think about. It is a regionalization effort and that may be something we might be investigating.
And until, we were the poor sisters in government gentlemen for a long time, but the, the president administration has sent us some money to distribute among cities and towns, which has changed our thinking sometimes. And maybe our status. We as a county are charged with giving out is the figure of one, 137, 137. We have 137 million to be distributed for federal relief under the Opera Act. Every city in town puts in an application that when you folks leave and you don't have to leave, we, we're awarding some money today to the town in Needham for a walk or pond improvements, for instance. Each city in town maintain, main determines what the money is used for. The county, and I will say that we collaborated with Bristol County, Plymouth County and Bonsable County, have hired outside accounting firms to, and a law firm who who go through all these applications. Tell us if it meets the federal guideline, then we give out the money. We started giving some money out late last year and up to today, out of the 137 million, we've given five million, nine hundred ninety one thousand dollars out. Interestingly enough, the first award we gave to the town of Dover was in the public safety area. We paid for a replacement of their dispatch radio tower replacement, which was blown down recently. The application comes in, we review, our people review it, we handle the money. I learned a long time ago, because I've been in government a long time, not to make promises, but I am optimistic. I'm sure this promise could never be made before because quite frankly, the the county had no extra funding, but this is new to us. We're doing a good job on it. We're enthusiastic. We believe in realization. A couple of weeks ago, we had the folks in from the dispatch, what's that Norfolk dispatch? It's not going to fire and police. Most, I think, most of these towns are in the same group. It was similar. I think we're open to really trying to take a look at it. The catch here is each city in town has to put in individually. And if they go okay, it gets to us. But I'm sure your selectmen and mayors know that I don't think there's any cities here, but there are cities in the county, you know, know how this works and I think, I think all this stuff is excellent. This is certainly a, a great thing. I think we take for advantage, take for granted what goes on, but.
Well, I think Chief, the chief of Milton, I said earlier, that they got opera money from us for, with radio?
Portable radios.
Portable radios.
I'm sorry, chief.
Yeah. So there is, there's a, not a precedent, but certainly awarding things for fire safety and fire improvement.
Correct. Two hundred and eighteen thousand. Sorry. Actually, Milton's getting money three times. So I, I don't want to go way out on a limb, but we, we need to quantify this. Our county executive here, the county director, John Cronin, is, does, does the, the lion's share of this administratively and he'll tell us afterwards, don't promise things until you know what you can do. But I'm certainly, I know this board is willing to look at it and I think it's something that really we get online. No, everyone knows nothing's for nothing. I mean, I assume this is all professional firefighters. Not unioned so much. Massachusetts professional, without exception, right? Okay. And training is, is, is a great thing. I'll take a little homeboy advantage here being from Quincy. I have this quarry stuff. A number of years and I learned to swim in the quarries and I, I, I lost a high school classmate in 1963 named Joel Ryan, who right in West Quincy was, was crushed. I remember going there and seeing, I know Milton, I know, well, absolutely Quincy was there and I know I know Milton was there. And he was a classmate of mine. I knew him personally. He went up there hustling around like we always did. Went there with the boy scouts and I, and while my years working in the city of Quincy, I would go up there with Chief Tom Goleman, who responded to everything. A great guy that I worked with. And I saw a lot of this happening, but you take, you don't realize it until it happens. So I think training is the key and I, I, I think we're willing to look at it. Again, it's the way in which Uncle Sam distributes this money is through the county. We don't give out any money that the city and town doesn't request because they know best.
Mr. Shay.
So spend more time with just like.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Just kind of a procedural matter. Were we to request some of the opera funds?
It would have to.
Could we, could we use a single community to be the fiduciary? Can we say, for example, Milton, we're going to put the request through them that benefits the team?
Sure. I'm not sure the way Milton's spending their money. I have to tell you, we haven't.
Might want to pick a town that hasn't gone to the well yet. There's, there's several of those.
Oh, yeah. We've only scratched the. I can tell you that originally we talked about a lot of water and sewer and some of it is water and sewer. Bill is getting the most amount and want a water treatment plant, et cetera. Walpole is involved in the stuff, but yeah, I mean, we're very cognizant of public safety and I think giving money for radios is just scratching the surface. Maybe you could have your own system and you know, if one of the towns is willing to sponsor, we do it a portion from each, but it's new to us, but it's not new. It's not as new as it was a year ago. We're up and running. We're taking applications and we're, we're, we're we're working with them all the time. I mean, we're waiting on, I think our biggest application is going to be coming in from the city of Quincy very soon. It's like seven million dollars and you know, in another area, but the answer is yes, but we got to walk before we run. But I think when, if you were here two years ago, we'd, we'd, we'd all, you know, we're all, we're all together in public, the public's interest. And we would say, you know, this is great stuff, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't know where to give you a quarter because we, we didn't have it. So we're willing to spend Uncle Sam's money as long as it meets the criteria. I don't want to say anymore because.
Any other questions?
Just like put some things together and then Director Cronin could work with us. He's been here on this. Chairman Shay said he's done the lion's share of the work filtering out things and helping you a little bit. And then we can look carefully at that. And they said it's, it's vetted very carefully. All the things we're doing is under scrutiny of two accounting firms and a law firm. So everything's by the book, which it should be. But I think we're optimistic. You know, I think we might be able to help out. Should be great. So.
All right.
Well, okay. Any other questions? Any other comments, gentlemen? We're gonna, we're gonna have a one minute recess and we're gonna go into the town in Needham Award, Opera Award in one minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Collapses at the shipyard, everything.
Really pleasure to see you. See you again. And they would give you the help you will do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Nice to see you. We'll see you again. Excellent. That was excellent.
A rescue technician and became chief.
I thought I recognized you in one of the photos. A little different. That's the guy sitting in front of me.
Younger and thinner.
Well, aren't we all, right? You know?
That's right.
I want to see how you chief do.
Mr. Chairman, good to see you.
We're here with the town in Needham for the purposes on the agenda of item number four, which an approval for the town in Needham. Did we introduce the folks that are here with us?
I don't know a lot.
Okay. Obviously, to us, he needs no introduction, but Selectman Dan Matthews, who is a former director in Norfolk County and he probably knows more about all of this and workings than anyone else here. So we're going to lean on Dan. We always do when it comes to Needham. We have our new member of our advisory board, Paul Brown. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you.
Recently appointed by the select board to be the representative. And we have the town of Cotton, Counting, Michelle Valencourt. And I'm going to turn this over to our director, John Cronin, for an explanation of this award, which is number.
Thirty two.
Number thirty?
It is number thirty two. It is a thirteenth award.
It's our thirteenth award since we started on this program, which you heard me explaining to the firemen when they were here. We started very slowly, but we're well into it. So far, so good. There's been a bump or two, but we work it out. We got a great team assembled. We got great advisors. And when we need help, we, we call and, and try to get explanations. So we're, we were crawling originally. Now we're up and walking and, and again, we're very proud of it. And we're six million dollars into it after today. So I think it's working. And with that, I'll have Director Cronin talk specifically about this award.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town of Needham put forth an ARPA request. This is their first award for $356,000 associated with the walk upon improvement project, which I believe is through the Needham Conservation Commission. This particular grant falls under the infrastructure water sewer category of the ARPA grant. According to the application, the project is slated to go through 2022 and into 2023. And it looks like, and I'll, I expect we'll get more in a minute. This is part of a comprehensive sewer project. Project that is funded through the town of Needham. So before you, it was this first award for Needham totally $356,000. If it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn this back over to Needham to introduce their team and offer any details on the project.
Okay. Any comment?
Chairman, I'll just, just speak briefly and then maybe, I don't know if Michelle or, or I see also Lisa McDonough is here on the town, from the town staff. But just to thank you, the commissioners, and I see a lot of county staff on the call as well, and wanted to thank you for all the work on this. Yeah, this is a, this is a pond that used to be part of the Walker Gordon Farm that people remember that far back. And there is, there is sewer and drainage in the area that needs to be addressed and the pond itself is subject to eutrophication and drains into the Charles. So it's a, it's a complicated set of work that needs, that needs to be done and that the public and the environment will really benefit from doing. I just wanted to take just a minute to, to, to say hello and to thank you guys. Thank the commissioners for all the work on this. As well as our new rep to the, to the advisory board, Paul Brown, joining us today, but particularly all of the, of the town staff that worked on this as well, you know, I think we all know, but it's worth saying that the ARPA is a huge and important program and very helpful to the country. With a lot of benefits, many of which are still to come. But it is not a simple matter and it has to be gotten right. And the fact that you've got a good team at your end and the town staff has, has put its shoulder to the wheel to get this right is a great help. So I just wanted to say thanks. And of course, it's always, always good to see you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? And I, we do welcome Lisa. I didn't see it originally. I'll see Lisa, but welcome Lisa. And we're ready to go.
All right.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, with pleasure, I'd be pleased to make the motion to approve the ARPA grant to the town of Needham for infrastructure water sewer, specifically for the water pond improvement in the total amount of $356,000.
Second. Okay, a motion made and seconded. All in favor? Again, this is an award of 356,000 to the town of Needham for walk upon improvements. And we, we, yeah, it is unanimous and the check is in the mail, as they say.
It's electronically transferred.
Electronically transferred.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
We'll await another application. They'll await another application.
Great to see you all.
Congratulations. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you. This concludes our ARPA award for today, the town of Needham. Next item, if I may, is ask for a motion to go into executive session. And we're going to go into executive session, but we will be back at the end of the executive session to finish out our regular meeting. So I'll take a motion on executive session, members, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to general law 38, section 21, 83, discuss strategy with respect to pending and new litigation matters. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's litigating position as declared by the chair.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session. We're going to take a roll call vote, but we're going to ask folks, we're going to pack you in the waiting column, but we will be back to commence our regular meeting at the end of the executive session. On the executive session, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And the chairman will, yes, it's three to zero. We are going into executive session. Item number six, commissioners, when we start up again. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. We're back on our regular agenda on our Wednesday, March 16th, 2022 meeting. We're on item number six. Minutes of the joint open session meeting held on March 9, 2022 for approval.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 9th as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of approval of the open session minutes of the joint meeting on March 9th? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Number seven, public comment. Director Cronin, do we have any public comments that you know of?
Ah, no public comments.
Okay. Do we have anyone on the Zoom that has public comment? Last call for public comment. That takes care of public comment. Thank you. Number eight, appointments, we have none. Number nine, do we have any old business?
No, sir.
Number 10, we have several personnel matters for consideration. Actually, I believe there are four.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I'll screw you. I'll make the following motions. For the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, notice of appointment, our Brianna Corey of Somerset, Mass. As a 183-day instructor at the rates stated effective April 1, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the appointment of Brianna L. Corey as a 183-day instructor at our agricultural high school effective 4/1/2022. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Go next.
A Waltham recreational facility, I'll make the following motion. Notice of appointment of Caroline Cavici of Quincy as a seasonal pro shop attendant effective March 17. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Two notices of terminations. One for Donald Murphy of Quincy as seasonal pro shop attendant effective March 17 and termination of Emma O'Neil as seasonal pro shop attendant effective March 17. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, the maintenance, a notice of appointment of Robert McDonough of Quincy, Mass. As temporary custodian for the rates stated effective March 21, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I have a comment on this appointment. I believe this brings us to max on the temporary positions in the maintenance, facility maintenance department. And I say again that these temporary positions are being discussed in this present budget, which is before us and hopefully before, honored before, I'll be on July 1st. The word temporary will drift into the past, but it's part of our former negotiations.
That's right.
Brought about by the Abraham report. And hopefully, all these four temporary people that we've hired recently will, and I'm getting, we're getting good reports on three of them because we haven't seen Mr. McDonough yet. Hopefully it'll all work out. That's all. On the appointment of Robert McDonough as a temporary custodian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Just real quickly, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think you mentioned that this would be the max amount of vacancies.
I think so.
We had an individual who retired, but we're waiting his payout value before backfilling it.
Is that a rent of court?
I believe it is.
So that would, we'd have to fill that from within and then go from there.
I believe so.
Okay. We'll deal with it in the budget. I have no intention, I don't think, of terming custodial position. Well, we'll deal with it in the budget.
Yes.
Better show. All right.
All right.
Number 11, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the following for the warrant list of March 16. Number one, 22-37 payroll to county, the amount of $130,384.5. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? It is a vote.
Second one, line item 22-38, the opera award to Needham, the amount of $356,000. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next group of expenses. Line item 030322, expense to the county, $107,582.96. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next line item 22-09A, expense for the school, the amount of $142,865.65. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Two more. Line item 22-09B, expense for the school, $361,110.18. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last one, Mr. Chairman, 22-09C, expense for the school, the amount of $5,127.35. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
Welcome.
Bid openings, we have none today. Number 13, contract awards. Recently, we received our a quote or two about cost of electricity for the county, and I'm going to have Nancy explain it in our intent to go forward today, but I have something to say at the end of it. Go ahead, Nancy.
Yes, I got email quotes for electricity from Solidified Energy, which is a broker in interstate gas supply, which is a supplier. Interstate gas was the lower amount out of the two. And we're doing right now a contract for seven months in the amount of .1151 per kilowatt for all the Eversource accounts and .10175 kilowatt for all the national grid accounts. We'll be watching this to see when the rates start to lower a little, then we'll walk.
And that's the reason for a seven month contract?
Seven months.
That's what I was going to say. So we revisit this. I, I don't want to put words in Nancy's mouth, but I believe she told me that even both of these brokers recommended the short-term account because the prices have changed so much.
Yes.
And then we revisit it. Okay. We looked at the two we received and we'd go on with which one, please.
Next time around, we should go, we'll go, probably go for longer term, but right now the prices are just so.
Look at it, but we want to keep it open and get the best situation. Okay. Any questions, commissioners? Do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes.
Can the name of the company is?
IGS.
I need a motion to appoint IGS as a safety call and electricity broker. It's.
Water. Supplier.
Supplier for a period of.
Seven months.
Seven months.
I'll make that as a set of motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To be reviewed in seven months. It is a vote. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
I, again, I had one, I had one question about, one person inquiring about it. I just want to thank Nancy for, I asked her and, you know, she dug it all out and we want to keep an eye on it and get the best, best deal we can get. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Shay, there's two sections on the bottom for your signature.
Okay. Next subject is number 14, budget development director.
Cronin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sent out a, an email to department heads and to commissioners alike informing them of the upcoming budget calendar. I just wanted to verbalize some of those points. A week from today, the finance committee will be meeting to have a first look at the FY '23 county budget. As many of you know, we hired a firm to help us take this budget process, specifically the format, and automate it using the Infinite Vision software. Working with the vendor, making a very good progress to date. The, the process will go on through the spring and probably into May before we have completed the budget. But in addition, but in addition, the.
I've been a lot of things. I have an answer. Thank you.
We will have completed the process, but in addition, the formatting, which is critical. So after next week, we will, I will have a budget presented to you as part of your open public hearing that's required by law. You will see this budget. I'm going to tell you it will likely not be balanced at that point. We are looking to solve some of the deficiency issues between now and the beginning of April when the budget is submitted to the finance committee and advisory board. Furthermore, I just wanted to alert you that we did alter the schedule last week and I sent out a revised schedule to all the department heads. This afternoon, I wanted to also share with you, I think it's in your package, gentlemen, the, some work that we did this past week to help streamline decision-making and review where we stand. When I arrived in this job, the Abrahams Group was beginning to complete its work. And as you know, last fall, they did, they delivered a product to you that contained quite a lot of material, including multiple recommendations. Working with my assistant director, thank you, Commissioner, thank, working with our assistant director, Bill Buckley. We've assembled primarily two pages. We wanted to streamline this down from the large legal document that we gave you early on to show you that out of all those recommendations, over 200, there were approximately 80 that were financially related. So before you are, I call your attention to two pages. There's one with a green banner and one with a, an orange banner. The green banner reflects to date what we know to be the progress financially against all of these Abrahams Group recommendations. There are 46 of them. So more than half of the financial recommendations have been adopted. They are planned or they're underway. And you'll note those on the green branded page. Good progress. The orange branded page, however, reflects items that the Abrahams Group put forward regarding financial recommendations that have not been touched. And so I ask you today if you could, through some consensus or vote, inform me of any additional changes you would like to undertake for the FY '23 budget after hearing from all the department heads and before we begin to balance this budget. I thought I'd give you the opportunity to look at it in a streamlined fashion. Bill also produced a, a document that has some of the key unimplemented recommendations. And these are four of them that surfaced, including, of course, the one that I think we talk regularly about, and that's the consolidation of IT under a single controlled chief information officer. The second one is the registry of deeds, should spend down their deeds exercise fund. The third one is the Norfolk County and Norfolk County Agricultural High School custodial consolidation. And then finally, the food service program at the Aggie. These are the larger recommendations of the Abrahams Group. There's been a fair amount of discussion since last fall. And before we leap off and start balancing a budget, I wanted to take this moment, this time, to assess if there's any unfinished business or any additional elements that are not in green that you want to push into FY '23 for consideration.
So you feel these are well on their way or understood and like being done?
They are.
This is my words, not yours, but is that correct?
It is correct.
And then we've got, these are, these are in, in or out of the budget, depending who you talk to. And we can, all right. I visualize this as chairman, that, you know, a study is a study. I never intended, I never dreamed, I don't think that everything's going to go carte blanche. I don't think everything is going to happen just as, as it was brought in because it's not utopia, utopia. I would like to go back to the department heads, even if we do it one-on-one or we can do it. And, and, and. With respect. Go to the treasures. So item number 22, what about fund balancing? Here's what they say. What do you say? And, and go right through them and try to, try to make some yellows green and then before, before the end of the budget.
But like, for example, I'm trying to understand what you want from us, John. I mean, we had a treasurer in, I think, last week. And I asked the treasurer about cross-training and he gave an answer. And we also, he's had something about that, he addressed something about the award that the Abraham said they should pursue. And he answered that. So some of these things shouldn't be on there. They've already been addressed. And he said, they're not interesting going forward. And we didn't take a vote saying, you need to. We said, we accepted. So what I'm trying to find out is commissioner action, some of these we've already acted on, I thought. Well, I asked him about cross-training and Joe Jory gave a very detailed answer as to what he's doing. Now, I mean, I've been the perfect answer, but he gave.
I don't disagree with you, but I mean, I think someone, I agree, I remember that and I think it's not an issue, even cross-training.
Right, no.
We talked about him leaving.
No, I'm trying to.
But I think we need the treasurer to say, yes, I agree to that. It becomes a great.
Single one of these again?
No.
I'm not up for that. I mean, something redundancy, we've done it already. I mean, some of these we've already done, you know, so.
Well, I think it's going to come down to four or five of the big ones. I don't think this stuff about new software and everyone being on the same page with personnel.
Right.
The, the handbook, the, the tracking of sick and vacation time. I mean, it's long overdue, but we're going to do it.
Maybe they can suggest, I'm not, I'm trying to be proactive and helpful.
I agree with.
Maybe some of these could just say, you know, already discussed or maybe put, and then we can always circle back at another time. But I don't want to get bogged down with too many to go into all these again and again and again. I mean, you know, you know what I'm saying? All right. The other thing, these four items here.
Yes, sir.
Now, I want to make sure I'm understanding you right. Are you saying these are the big four that Bill picked out and said, we need to look at very carefully?
That are not yet implemented.
Okay. So the trustees, I think at the last trustee meeting, and maybe that's not appropriate to comment on.
No, it is.
It was a record.
It is.
They talked about, at the moment at least, keeping the cafeteria service going.
Agree to, to work with the, yes.
Yeah.
That's, I'm looking for that answer, then I'll make it a.
So that one.
Take it off of the orange, Pete, and make it a green with a caveat saying.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Now, it was okay. We're going to give it a shot, but we're going to, we're going to keep an eye towards that. But that, again, shouldn't, we shouldn't have to bog down on that discussion because they kind of, and Bill wouldn't know that and you wouldn't know that. How would you have known that? You know what I'm saying? It's not critical, just trying to help you out. But, and so that, you know, that, that sort of addresses that one. The other two registry of deeds, I think the first one is, we're waiting for the Ripples report, right?
That's right.
And the second one, can you clarify that? On spending down the deeds exercise? What do you, what do you mean by that?
So I think the, I'll have to read the explanation of the Abrahams Group put here.
Yeah.
The Norfolk Key, Norfolk County deeds exercise fund balance has grown substantially since FY '29. According to the Abrahams Group, the percent of fund balance to its budget has also increased correspondingly. The FY '19 fund balance is excessive compared to other counties and compared to the GFOA's best practice for having a fund balance to operate budget ratio of 50%. Norfolk County's technology fund balance has fluctuated over the years. It's FY '19 fund balance as a percentage of the budget is lower than the other two counties and falls within GFOA's standard. The recommendation is the registry of deeds should spend down the deeds exercise fund balance to a more acceptable level. So with respect to this item, I don't recall hearing from the registrar on an effort to undertake that task. So do the commissioners have an interest in asking him specifically, is there a plan to do this? Is he going to adopt it or not?
So again, I'm trying to understand clearly. So the recommendation is by the Abraham report, spend the bond, the balance down. So again, I'm trying to understand clearly. So the recommendation is by the Abraham report, spend the bond the balance down. Is that how does he spend it down? On technology, on personnel or equipment or?
Yes.
Is that what you're doing?
I would yield to the registrar of deeds on exactly what his spend down plan would be to answer your question. But I think the request could be made to the registrar through you
Yeah.
on what his plan would be.
Sure.
Sorry.
That's totally appropriate.
Yeah, I don't recall it coming up during this discussion.
Okay, that I don't think that I don't think we talked about that. That one escaped me. I don't think we did last week.
Well, not specifically, but sometimes if we don't get specific.
Yeah.
And what goes by, we say, well, you know, we never talked about that. So I mean, I I think this is a great tool. It's a furtherance of the longer documented that John and Bill have sent to us and I I am each week I I've been I'm getting better with it. I look at it as I look at the departments. But I don't want someone to say to me in July
Right.
when they get the button. Oh, you we didn't discuss that. I want, you know.
No, excellent.
Everything's on the table in this budget.
Please, I'm not. Don't misconstrue. I'm telling you, this is great. This is great. But I'm looking at the thing quick. I just looked at it and I went, some of these we talked about. The he he and the registrar did address, I think, on the Abraham's report and if my memory is right, his response in terms of plan room organization, customer service and lack of printers. I thought those were addressed. I'd be willing to go back and look at it again. I could be wrong. And maybe, again, he might not have concurred with Abrahams, but technology, I don't recall that one. That was that it's interesting. That's sizable amount of money, too.
The technology fund?
Right, right. That's, you know, so, yeah, I mean, who do you want to proceed?
Well, some of these will go very fast.
Yeah.
Commissioner, if I could just clarify, you you began by asking if we, you know, we we had discussed certain elements with the registry, the treasury and so forth.
Right.
Don't dispute that.
Okay.
But with the with the register, excuse me, what the commissioners have done to date is they've been in listening mode.
Right.
You have received budgets. Now it's time, in my in in my opinion, to pivot towards a recommendation. Do you now feel as though after hearing the various budgets that you want to proceed with something that you heard about that you might disagree with?
Okay.
It's now time to assess whether or not it's time to take action or move on or take no action.
Excellent. That's that's what I was trying to figure out what you wanted from us. Okay, fun. But I thought I thought you wanted to bring it back in and have a rehearing again. And I thought, you know.
And I want to I want to justify it as much as I can because I don't want anyone to say on one side, I don't want to say you spent seventy five thousand and use it as a doorstop. On the other hand, I want everyone to say
Yeah.
now what the hell's been going on there? You just took everything new and threw out the baby with the bathwater. Somewhere in the middle is.
The the difficulty with this unfortunately is we have a relatively short window to develop a draft budget. I'll be happy to inquire with the registry on recommendation number two on the big four. But if there are any others that you would like me to look back at and discuss with the department, as I will do so, I'm just gonna preface it by saying.
I can tell you right now that one or two of this.
A lot of time to turn it around.
One or two of the school items is gonna take year two to get to.
Yeah.
Lunch being one of them.
And I thought I'm not gonna put words in his mouth.
Doesn't mean it's gonna be.
I thought Mr. McGowan, who was our first one, I think.
Yeah.
I thought he had said he was against the consolidation. He didn't think that would work. The consolidation of the Aggie personnel and his personnel.
He did, and that's gonna be argued out.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so this is, I understand now what you want from us. You want to your suggestion is we go through orange, take a position, yes, no, study it for another year or whatever. Go from there.
I also want
Okay.
to take a peek at a lot of this because
Thank you. Thank you.
Some things that's like auto already underway, mutual processing, sick vacation, personal time tracking planned. I want to be sure that every department head knows how we're gonna handle that. Decentralized responsibility for human resources, stuff like that. If further explanation is needed, we'll say, how do you feel about this? So we're ready to go. Some of we're gonna put everyone on the same software, so to speak, which has always been an issue. Even when they bought software before, Commissioner, some departments didn't implement and others did.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, why do this stuff?
No, this is good. I get it now. I was a little fuzzy. Okay.
And I'm not saying that it's the end all and be all, but
Yeah, that's fine.
Somewhere in between.
And it shouldn't take obviously that long either. I was, if you think about it, you could do group by group and just kind of go through some of them. But it's do we have my notes for my binder? That's all I think. But, you know. That's fine. Almost anymore. Fine. Thank you.
So you you would like me to circle back with the registrar on number two?
Definitely.
And assess with the department heads if there are any further actions for the items that are in orange.
Right. Okay.
I just.
That'd be great. That'd be great. That'd be great.
We're still on budget development.
We are relative to that, I believe. That is all I have. So my hope is a week from today, we will have a draft budget to share with the Finance Committee and inch closer and closer as we get to the thirtieth to a balanced budget, although I'm skeptical it will be balanced by the thirtieth for the public document that's required by law. So that's the short term plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Fifteen, report on the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one.
Commissioner Shea, you were kind enough to reference a document. So I gave a copy to Commissioner Shea earlier. He was referencing it. This is just a quick sheet.
I used that for for
I know.
For new today. I stole your thunder, but I liked it.
I like it. So forgive the.
Never give me anything a minute ahead, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Forgive the 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 raw look of what you're seeing, but to date, the county has awarded thirteen grants totaling just under six million dollars, starting with Wellesley was the first one awarded on December first. Dover came in a little bit after that. So we're making good progress. There are a total of thirty, I believe it's thirty five or thirty six applications in the portal. So with thirteen being awarded, you get the idea. Many of them are in flux. We're in progress. I wanted to let folks know that this is this is the kind of documentation that I expect to evolve over the next several months. If not weekly, periodically, I I hope to give the commissioners a professionalized dashboard, the status of this overall grant, what it's doing for the communities, not just from the perspective of who got what and under what category, but a global answer. So how much are we giving to water infrastructure? How much are we giving to economic impact, public health and so forth? Working with Clifton Larson and their team over the last month, we've been exchanging concepts from my perspective on what I want the dashboard to look like. They're they're literally customizing the build of this. And so my hope is shortly I'll have something to share with you that becomes a regular reporting tool that we'll keep on our website so people can see exactly how these dollars are being used at the local level through your votes. So today, I just want to give you this brief update as we turn the corner into the spring and show you we're making good progress and I expect more in the next several months. That's all.
Commissioner Shea.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, two things. Any more news on Bellingham? They got there was a problem last week. We're gonna give the award out and they took some needed correction. Is that?
There wasn't a correction. What what Belling what Bellingham was a Bellingham had done a lot of work locally to create a strategy for the use of all their county funds against the revenue loss category. They they found out relatively late in the process that the revenue loss category was changed by the final rule back in February. They had not caught up with the correspondence that we'd sent out. So they sent in their upper applications with requests for revenue loss that exceeded their allotment.
Okay.
So I spoke with their finance director, who, you know, Mary's a wonderful, very, very smart woman. And I just said, look, you know, we don't, we can't give you the full award under revenue loss. We understand this is an alteration to your strategy. So I recommended to her that she park her applications. They're just sitting there. There's they're they're in level three waiting for action until and if we hear from the registrar, excuse me, the treasury on the U S Treasury on the status of the revenue loss appeal that we have. In the event it becomes favorable, we can move quickly with Bellingham. And if it's not favorable, now they have a path to go back and reconsider what what they would like to do. So that's that's what's going on with them. They're in a pause mode.
Yeah, real quick, follow up. Do we have a date set? I happened to see Commissioner Hanley over the weekend and wondered, do we have a date set? But he he mentioned the date.
I thought it was.
April eighth. He mentioned April eighth. I was jerked out. Official or unofficial?
It's unofficial. We were waiting for Barnstable to confirm. There are, but you know, we were gonna have one of our biweekly county conversations soon. I'll confirm the date.
Okay, great.
Yeah, they they went back and forth. And at one point, Treasurer Brian offered a host again, but Barnstable held the line and said, no, no, we'll do it. We just have to check with our people and we'll get back to you soon.
We we at the front side of this, we had four or five very good meetings very quickly.
Yeah, interesting. I was going, alright, thank you very much. Thank you.
The weather's getting warmer. It's a preferred time to go to Southeastern Massachusetts.
You're reading my mind.
Director Cronin, we're ready?
Yes, sir. Number sixteen.
Number six, number sixteen, report a county director.
Very good. A few items. The commissioner should know I through your approval last week, I signed the settlement confirmation sheet and sent it back to the Attorney General's Office last week. It has been received. So the next notice I receive will hopefully be relative to the award that Norfolk County will get on behalf of the opioid settlement. More on that later. D C M. Excuse me, the trial courts, the trial courts have reached out to us. And I believe all county courthouses looking to create a nursing mother's room in each of our courthouses. The individual who's coordinating this program is looking to perform site visits in early April to determine if courts either have existing nursing mother's room or they can program new ones. I've asked a couple of clarifying questions around the program, but it's not slowing us down. I reached out to John McGowan this past week and asked him to help me identify where we stand with each of our facilities. And John has indicated that we have at least one in Superior Court and he's assessing space availability in the other courts. I believe in most of these cases, there will be some modification necessary to come in line with the profile of what these rooms are. They're very simple. I've done my my old job as well. They they cannot be bathrooms or anything like that. They have to be discreet, easily accessible rooms with an indoor lock, a table, a chair, an electrical outlet. Very easy, you know, programming, but it has to be discreet and accessible for nursing mothers. So it's something we want to follow up on and I'll report back to the commissioners on any financial impact that this may have on our capital indoor facility plans going forward. On behalf of H R, I hope I get this right, Michelle. The Mayflower Municipal Health Group is announcing a health and wellness fair on Wednesday, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, from twelve to four P M. This flyer will be sent out to all employees and retirees shortly. Employees must register to attend the webinar. The info will be sent to all of you after today's meeting. The only increase in costs is associated with the health plan. This is the open enrollment time, so any employees should be alerted that this is your time to examine your health plan coverage, make changes if you like, and ask questions certainly of our Mayflower Municipal.
And that fly goes out to everybody?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And we've had these before.
Anyone.
Okay.
That's right. Just very briefly, I wanted to give the commissioners a brief facility update. I spoke with John McGowan earlier. I know he's on the call, so I'd asked John to chime in if I missed anything. But they wanted to report that in Quincy, the prosecutor's office renovation is completed. The court magistrate has requested another another office be renovated, so they're gonna be busy there. As some of you may know, there was problems with the concrete in the garage at Quincy and the mason's working there to remove that loose cement and repair the area. Dedham District Court Cape Way Roofing is in the process of getting the area set up to start the job next week. That's the roof and gutters, I believe. Brookline Court, Bill Buckley and I took a site visit. The court is in need of gutter and downspout replacements. Sheila's getting some quotes for that. And they've also purchased, they've got a purchase order for a duck split system, which was part of the capital plan. In addition, they've reached out to Alson Corporation. You may know that as the firm that's doing the work on the Superior Court Dome. They mothballed through the winter and as we approached the beginning of April, we expect them to resume their work. That project. The Stoughton Roof Project is gearing up. There was a site visit last Friday between the structural engineer and the roofing, excuse me, the the selected firm Ambient and their roofing subcontractor. They're working out some final details and I'm waiting a timeframe from them and when they expect to start. That job should be about two weeks in duration. A lot of it will depend on whether or not they have preordered their structural steel, which could be a supply stream issue. We're waiting to hear from them on the readiness of that project. And as you know, the rooftop units have been on site since last year, so we don't expect any delays with that.
I'd say about two weeks, you're saying?
The roof, once they can go, yeah, yeah, if everything is green. Yep, that's and they do need favorable weather conditions, Commissioner, in order to make the adhesives work. John, did I miss anything on that list? I think I got it all.
John, you there?
I think he's all set. The commissioner should.
Wait, John?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm here.
No, I just wanted to make sure. Did I?
We know.
Did I forget anything else, John, from that report on facilities?
No, that that's well covered.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, John. Good. Good news. Good to see some stuff moving ahead now. Most be.
Hopefully, we get that project in Stoughton taken care of.
Yes.
Hallelujah.
Keep them happy.
That's been a long time coming.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Just a couple of more items in the interest of time. The commission should be aware that simultaneously to this budget process, I'm also working towards a third supplemental that'll be heard by the advisory board through you in early April. We will have a modest list, not big items, but year end punch list items. And one of the things I'm going to try to do also is to take the F Y twenty two capital budget. There's been some slippage on some projects that have yielded some surplus in there and repurpose some of those funds. So I'll try to get the advisory board to vote new projects for the F Y twenty two capital bill. One of them, John's actually working on a quote for me now is to do the bathrooms. We heard from the treasurer during his budget presentation that the bathrooms down on the first floor, as well as the ladies room up here, have not been touched for generations. They're in tough, tough shape. So we'll be looking to try to renovate those three bathrooms with the F Y twenty two capital money once and if the advisory board addresses it. So I just want to let you know that around the thirtieth, when we're talking about the public presentation of the draft budget, you'll also be reviewing and hopefully voting upon the third supplemental for consideration by the advisory board. Just a heads up. And I've sent out notice to all the department heads requesting any transfers or needs. I believe I need to have that back this Friday, so I should be in good shape for that. And finally, I just want to wish all my colleagues a happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you. Had to get it in.
The most green tire I have. I did my best. There is little green in it.
Mister Director, number seventeen, in emergency items or topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate. I have none. I enjoyed our group deck, Commissioner Shea, that came in at the group, the fire chiefs.
Thank you.
I think, you know, without getting too optimistic, I enjoy that kind of interaction very much. And if we have a motion to adjourn before we adjourn, I want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow. And I noticed that around the county, due to COVID, St. Patrick's Day is being celebrated a little less. But perhaps someday we'll get back to where it was at one time in the different communities, but either way, I know we were fortunate enough on the weekend to get out to a Plymouth County celebration for St. Patrick's Day and we wished everyone well in Plymouth County, both Director, Commissioner Shea and I. Commissioner Hanley from Plymouth County hosted that, so.
That was fun.
Happy St. Patrick's Day to all our employees and to all our cities and towns and
Mr. Chairman, on that note, I'll move to adjourn at three o'clock.
Second. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
It is a vote. We have a regular meeting next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See, I recruit, folks, to say.